Yeah.
You doing okay?
No, no part of it.
Okay. Well, we'll get a day off, don't we? Good. We know that song anyway, for something we've sung that for years.
We do it.
Yeah.
Everything, oh Scott, everything being recorded.
I like teaching that.
I do too.
Morning, thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll be led in a word of prayer by David Barber. And remain standing for a place.
Glad it's great. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today and our many blessings. Father, just thank you for the opportunity that we have to be a part of this meeting this morning. I pray that you be with the commissioners, just to make important decisions for you in Benzette County. Father, just thank you for everyone that's here in attendance, the families that are represented. And as we enter the time of our graduation season, we do want to remember all of our high school and our college graduates as they prepare to begin an important chapter in their lives, but also entering a new chapter in their lives. We just ask that you watch over them, be with all the families that'll be traveling to and from the various graduation ceremonies coming up. Father, I just ask you now, that you be with us as we carry on with our responsibilities. And I ask that you forgive us of our sins and all this, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Call to order, the Benzette County Regular Session of the Commissioners' Court Meeting on Wednesday, May the 12th, 2021, at nine oh one a.m. Now, form is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners' Court approval, same for April the 28th, 2021. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion, corrections to the minutes? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. You have the bills before you.
Show me.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Lepred. Any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. General business, is there any general business, any announcements that need to be made? Is there anything we need to be aware of? I know they are still giving COVID shots.
Yeah, ratified.
Okay. Back up to item number four. Discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion on the bills that's for you to be ratified? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, now we'll go back to general business. Any announcements or anything where we are giving COVID shots at the firegrounds out here? If anybody would like, I think they're giving the Pfizer and the Johnson and Johnson as well. If you wanted either one of those. I pretty well thank everyone in Benzette County, the ones that wanted, it's got them. But it's still an opportunity. If anybody, if you know family members or anything, they don't even have to be from Benzette County. They can go out there if you know anyone that would like to have a COVID vaccination.
Also, next.
Drive through too.
Yeah, next we got that drive through. Drive through.
Well, the drive through, they have them in different towns in the county, like Ben Wheeler's on the 19th.
Okay.
Each town has a different day to drive through and get your shots.
Okay. Need any appointment?
No.
Okay.
You can call if you want to, but it'd just take anybody.
Okay. Is there any other general business we need? Yes.
Just another reminder, Carter Blood Drive is in two weeks. So do you want to make a point in your resources page, I put the link on there, so.
Okay. Carter Blood Drive in two weeks. The link's on the Benzette County website. Human resource sources. You'd like to donate?
So the, we're passing it, the damages that is done during the freeze, they're like, you're promised on that, it's been pulled together for much longer than they.
That's right. Let me just take a moment to thank Commissioner Pearson for, that was amazing. In the storms of, we had water running out of two buildings, one in Will's Point and the annex over here. And it's not easy. I mean, getting insurance and adjusters and stuff. Mr. Pearson's work, thank you, Mr. Pearson, for working on that. It's a job. It inconvenience everyone, have to displace them, but then they come back, but it is progressing very well. It looks good. Looks very good, so thank you, sir.
Well, Mr. Waddell's helping out with that whole lot now. On the, on the remodel part of it.
Any other announcements? Any general business? Being none, we'll move to public comments. Scott, did anyone sign up for public comments? Did you get any public comments? Okay. Being no public comments, we'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider signing proclamation for Flag Day and Flag Week. Carrie Wolverton would like to address the court.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody?
We're good.
My name's Carrie Wolverton. I'm the president of Captain James Burleson Chapter, U.S. Daughters of the War of 1812. And we'd like, we're requesting today a proclamation for Flag Day, which is June the 14th. In the United States, Flag Day is celebrated on June the 14th. It commemorates the adoption of the flag of the United States by resolution of the Second Continental Congress in 1777. And I'd like to, we're going to have a program on June the 14th at the Veterans Memorial. And I'd like to read to you the proclamation as we're requesting. On Flag Day and throughout National Flag Week, we pay tribute to the American flag, the most recognizable symbol of the principles for which our republic stands. For more than 200 years, the Stars and Stripes has represented liberty, justice, and the rule of law. Recently, as our nation has come together to respond to the coronavirus pandemic, our flag has been a reminder of the courage, tenacity, and loyalty that define the indomitable American spirit. Our great flag causes us to reflect humbly on the immeasurable price that has been paid to keep it so gallantly streaming. Throughout our nation's history, proud patriots have nobly answered the call of duty when our country needed them the most. The Star Spangled Banner serves as an everlasting remembrance of the sacrifices heroes of every generation have made in conflicts from the Revolutionary War to the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. Our flag ensures that we never forget the incredible sacrifices our men and women in uniform have made to defend our liberty and our way of life. The American flag represents the unity of our country and its people. Old glory should be revered and cherished as a symbol of all that makes America the greatest country in the world. As we honor our beautiful flag on this day and throughout this week, let us vow never to forget the tremendous sacrifices made by patriots from generation to generation to ensure that the red, white, and blue continues to fly high and through. Today and every day, I am proud to join my fellow Americans in standing tall and saluting our great flag. To commemorate the adoption of our flag, the Congress by joint resolution approved August the 3rd, 1949, as amended, designated June 14th of every year as Flag Day, and requested that an annual proclamation calling for its observance and for the display of the flag of the United States on all government buildings. The Congress requested by joint resolution approved June the 9th, 1966, as amended, that annually a proclamation be issued designating the week in which June the 14th occurs as National Flag Week, and calling on all citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Second.
Commissioner Melton made motion. Commissioner Pearson, second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. It is approved. Here's a copy of the. Sign you pick. We got one more to do. Do what?
Do you want to read the now therefore part?
We can. Now therefore, I, Don Patrick Judge of Benzette County, Texas, do hereby proclaim June the 14th, 2021 as Flag Day and the week starting June the 14th, 2021 as Flag Week. I direct the appropriate officials to display the flag on all county government buildings during this week and urge all Americans to observe Flag Day and Flag Week by displaying the flag. I encourage the people of Benzette County to observe with pride and all due ceremony those days during Flag Day through Independence Day. Set aside by the Congress as a time to honor America, to celebrate our heritage in public gatherings and activities, and to publicly recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America. And witness thereof, I unto set my hand this 12th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2021, and of the independence of the United States of America 245th. Thank you. Item number eight, discuss and consider signing a proclamation of War of 1812, veteran Henry M. Barfield Senior Day. Mr. Wood, you may proceed.
By 1812, almost 30 years had passed since the end of the American Revolution, and the United States was developing as a nation. War was underway in Europe, America was neutral, thus had an advantage, as her maritime merchants could trade with both sides. But freedom was being infringed. The British Royal Navy was impressing or forcing U.S. sailors into service. At least 6,000 merchant mariners who claimed U.S. citizenship had been impressed. And that's an interesting word, y'all. Do you know what it means when they were impressed? They were kidnapped and literally made slaves to run the British Navy. In addition, the British continued to ally with native populations on the western frontier against the U.S. Congress declared war on the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Ireland on June the 18th, 1812. The American Navy engaged the British in the open seas, the coastline, Americans' inner waterways, and the Great Lakes. Army and militiamen faced the British and native populations on the northern border, the western frontier, the eastern shores, in the streets of our nation's capital, on the banks of the Mississippi near New Orleans, and across the Southland at places like North Carolina where Private Barfield served. For the second time in 30 years, the United States fought the world's greatest military power, and we held our own. The Captain James Burleson Chapter of the National Society of United States Daughters of 1812 will hold a grave marking for Private Henry Barfield Senior, veteran of the War of 1812, in Wesley Chapel Cemetery on Old Kaufman Highway, Benzette County, Texas, on May 23rd. The War of 1812 was often called America's Second War of Independence and is credited with establishing the United States as an international power, opening the western frontier to expansion. With his father Lewis, Henry Barfield served in Captain Bruton's Company's Second Regiment in North Carolina during the War of 1812. Henry was born in 1798 in North Carolina. He married Elizabeth McLeod, and they had 10 children. Before 1856, the family had moved to Cherokee County, Texas. By 1867, H.M. moved his family to Smithtown, and by 1870, he had moved his family to Benzette County, Texas. H.M. was known and loved by many preachers. He was their friend, and his house was their home. He was loved by all who knew him. Henry died in 1883 in Benzette County, Texas. He was laid to rest in the Wesley Chapel Cemetery. We're requesting a proclamation for War of 1812 Patriot Henry M. Barfield Senior Day. Whereas the War of 1812, known as the Second War for American Independence, was fought on land and sea from the 18th of June, 1812, to the 17th of February, 1815. And whereas the sacrifices by sailors, soldiers, and citizens who served in the War of 1812 further defended the liberties previously won in the American Revolution. And whereas veterans of the War of 1812 were among the first settlers of Texas, with over 150 of these veterans known to be buried in Texas. Today, thousands of Texas citizens trace their lineage back to these patriotic settlers. And whereas Henry M. Barfield Senior honorably served in the War of 1812 in Captain Bruton's Company's Second Regiment, North Carolina Militia. And whereas Henry M. Barfield Senior came to Texas, settled in Benzette County, and now lies at eternal rest in Wesley Chapel Cemetery. Whereas the National Society of United States Daughters of 1812 was founded on the 8th day of January, 1892, and for over a century have dedicated themselves to patriotism, preservation of documents and relics, and historic education.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lepred, second by Commissioner West. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now therefore, I, Don Patrick Judge of Benzette County, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 23rd day of May, 2021, as War of 1812 Patriot Henry M. Barfield Senior Day. And hereby urge all citizens to become more knowledgeable of the role of the War of 1812 played in the history and our nation and to the benefit of the citizenry of the great state of Texas. Sign this day, 12th May, 2021. Congratulations, thank you. And you may have these copies. You can. If you want to stand here, we'll stand.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for coming this wonderful.
Thank you, thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all's work.
Item number nine, discuss and consider the use of economic development funds to support the Wheels Point Economic Development Corporation for the Brazos Trailers' expansion. Pam Pearson's present with us. Pam, you may address the court. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Commissioner Lepred. Great to see you. Do you mind giving the names? Thank you. You are being handed the expected expansion for Brazos Trailers and Wheels Point Business Park. You'll see it's got a three-year and a five-year extension plan. We're excited that the court determined years ago how valuable it was for manufacturers in our county, growing employees. So I just want to give you a little bit of history on Brazos Trailers. And you'll see the very top portion of that is their original building they constructed. And then the bottom portion of it is the set building that they now acquired. They got an additional five acres that they're acquiring at this time. And then another five, six, nearly six acres is expanded for possible expansion for five years. So you'll see, they have a lot going on right there. So. The, they moved into our industrial park in 2017. They had 38 employees when they moved in there in January of 2017. They had 93 employees as of January of 2021. So they did exactly what they told us they were going to come here and do. Their annual wages and salaries went from $2.2 million in 2017 to $5.1 million in 2020. So they've paid over $14.8 million in salaries and wages to their employees. That's $14.8 million, in which was provided directly to impact 93 families in our surrounding area. And as well as those, those families have an indirect impact on other local businesses, as well as Brazos Trailers. As you know, they do a lot throughout our county. So the additional 56,000 square feet, which we're talking about, the buildings that are down on the south side, beginning at the left side and going toward the east, those buildings, they're ready to build in the next 12 months. It'll allow them to move all their production to the business park. It allows them to have more control over their production and inventory, having everything in one central location. With the construction of these additional buildings, and again, an increase in production and production lines, they are projecting the need to hire an additional 20 employees. So when you think of that, that's, that's an additional company is what you're talking about over the next 18 months. So I'm here today representing Wheels Point Economic Development, asking you to consider partnering with us as we give incentives to them for their expansion. Our incentives are going to total just under $200,000. And so we're asking the court to consider $11,250. As you know, the price of everything is going up. So as they're looking at that, you know, they're kind of getting scared of, you know, what's this going to do to us? What does the future hold? But they know this is a, this is a step they need to take. So we just looked at, at just the, the things that the city would have for permitting. And the city does have a third-party inspector, and so they would be paying these to the city. And then we're just asking that you would give this to the EDC for us to reimburse them as they move forward with the buildings. We try to figure out what's the best way we could keep tabs on what they're doing to show this is how far they've come. Now could they be reimbursed for this amount? So that's the only reason we chose those. It had nothing to do with the city. It was just to keep tabs on how they were expanding and not to give the money upfront, but as they put their money into it as they invest.
As, as they get the permits?
Yes, sir. And as they build the buildings. I would want the building totally constructed, and we may, they may say wait till all five are, but I would at least want each building constructed before we ask for any money. Do you have any questions, Simon?
But you're right about one thing, inflation's here.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, yeah.
It is.
So we have to deal with it.
We have a strong foundation of our manufacturers in the county, and a lot of that is thank you to you for seeing how important that is for even our secondary businesses, because that's how they're supported. We didn't have people working in Benzette County, we wouldn't have people eating as much, purchasing throughout the day. I mean, you, you just wouldn't have those needs that the businesses even have.
And that was one of our goals, one of my goals when I came in. One of my goals was to partner with the ESDs. I mean, the EDCs of the county, and if the head companies or businesses want to come in, it's going to help Benzette County. Hey, it's not taxpayer money. I have to apply for unclaimed capital credit from the electric companies, and that's, that money is to be used for economic development. And a matter of fact, I sent it in this week to ask for some more. I have to do it annually, and I think this is the very reason and purpose that we, that we use that money. It can only be spent for that. It's not, it's not taxpayer-funded from Benzette County taxpayers, and when we have the money.
I'm glad that we can support things.
Well, and you, Judge, and the court, at the time, you were a big part of why they chose Benzette County over the other counties they were looking at.
Yeah.
And so I'm thankful for that as well.
Yeah.
We were showing manufacturers that we are interested in that we can supply the manpower. We've got a job fair coming up to try to help with, with some of the businesses' struggles that they're having right now. As you know, that's, that's another thing that we're dealing with.
Right. I'll make a motion. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Any question, any other questions for Pam or any discussion? Being none, all in favor, say, approving the $11,250, and we'll make the check to the EDC. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Pam. Thank you for everything you do up there.
Thank you all, and I'm sorry, I can't stay for the rest of the meeting. The judge has me on the workforce board in Tyler, and so I have a meeting there next.
Thank you for serving that capacity.
Thank you.
Item number 10, discuss and consider granting additional temporary part-time employee for JP1. Dan, did you want to address Dan Mossieri, our HR Director? You want to address the court?
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. JP Judge McMillan is unable to be here. He's in, at the time. So what he's, what he's trying to do here is he has one full-time position and one part-time position. His full-time employee is retiring at the end of the month. So what he'd like to do is he's found someone and hired them. He'd like to bring this person on for, I believe it's, no, it's no more than two weeks. And he believes he has enough funds in his salaries line item. The problem is, he just doesn't have a position. And because there's no actual position there, he can't start this other employee to have them be trained by the current employees. So what he's asking is a short period where he can have that additional position so that the new employee can be trained by the current employee. And then that person will retire, and the new person will transition directly into that spot.
And Judge McMillan had called, talked to me, and he could be here. And his current part-time employee is going to be on vacation during that time. There's no, part-time employees don't get vacation pay. So she won't be getting her salary then. That would be used for this person so she could train and get ready for she took office. It's just a temporary part-time spot for this layover. So I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve this temporary part-time position.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Lepred, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion? How will we set that up, Sammy? I know you're an auditor, but how, how we, because there's not a position to put her. How will that be set up?
She'll be set up under the part-time position for pay for that period, and then it will change over to the full-time position when she takes that role. So it's just, you know, dollars going one way or the other for each of those line items, whether it's the part-time or the full-time. It's not actually going to change anything in this budget.
Yeah, it's not going to change the dollars. It is budget, and I just think about the position, okay? So she's going to be in that position, because that one's on vacation until June the 1st, I think I read in there, June, June the 1st.
Yeah, June the 1st is when his full-timer retires.
Okay.
The new person is going to become, the person he's wanting to hire part-time is going to become the new full-time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number 11, discuss and consider approving order for the sale of Memorial Day Firework Period beginning May the 26th through midnight, May the 31st.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Lepred. Any questions or discussion? You don't think it's too dry and we need a burn van or?
We need a flood.
It's too wet.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
You ever heard of keeping powder dry?
Item number 12, discuss and consider appointment of Emergency Service District Number Two Boarded. Item number twelve, discuss and consider appointment of emergency service district number two board of directors. Mr. LaPrad, you want to address the court on that?
Yes, sir. That's the ESD around the Grant Lane area. And uh, their board president sent me over an email. One of their members has uh, retired, stepped down from his positions to Bill Rowland and opened it up. And the board would like for us to appoint Ricky LaPrad to take his place.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrad, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussions? Being none, all in favor of appointing Ricky LaPrad to the emergency service district number two board of directors, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider donation of, from Sunrise on Lazy J Ranch LLC. For road repairs on Vincent County Road thirty four fifteen. Uh, the description of the work, starting at the intersection of Vincent County Road thirty four fifteen and Vincent County Road thirty four twenty five. Continuing east for sixteen hundred feet, overlay with approximately two inches of SSM material using lay-down machine. Mr. Pearson, you want to address the court?
This is uh, the third one of these and what it was last week, uh, Mr. Buller came and we. About last, sorry, not last, but two, last court, two weeks ago, that we were gonna get uh, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. And uh, one of the, one of this Lazy J made the check out to Vincent County. And so I didn't have it on the agenda. I didn't know it was gonna be made up that way. So we had to put that in the save for two weeks. This is uh, so now this has become a, a post-work donation. Instead of a pre-work donation. So I make a motion, we accept this check.
In the amount of?
In amount of eight thousand dollars.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner uh, Pearson, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider going out for uh, request for proposals for P twenty five radio system. Which I believe that's for the first responders, sheriff's office, first responders, uh, the P twenty five. I know Mr. La- Commissioner LaPrad has researched and worked quite a bit. You may address the court.
Yes, sir. Uh, I put this on here. I would like to go out for a request for proposals. Request for proposal are different than bids. With a request for proposal, different vendors can come make the proposal. And it gives us opportunity to see what's available and we can actually discuss and learn and work through until we find out exactly what we want to go to bid zone. And so I'd like to put this on here to give the auditor a chance to reach out for these proposals.
Okay, and I know that's a concern of the sheriff, uh, and we have Bud Sanford and Chief Allison uh, present today. They've already went through this process at Canton, uh, and the sheriff and, and trying to work together with everyone. In the best interest of the, all the cities and of Vincent County. Sheriff?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, as in like the officials, all the team like provisions, uh, we have to do share responsibility and make sure we get the best bang for our buck. Use every tax dollar as effective, efficient way possible. And bigger concern is that, bigger concern is that is, not only do we say, they're gonna serve a sheriff. Uh, I'm being concerned, it's the safety of, not just the deputies, the officers, the prosecutors, fire departments, EMS workers. They will make it on the radio and call for help, that, that they know, that they, they can on that, that radio to ask for help. In addition to that, we have to build a lot of radio system. Citizen calls for help, uh, we got the, our, our first responder will say, hey, this is the citizen's help. And citizen need to have a confidence in our radio system that we're able to communicate as soon as possible. Uh, so anything we can do to speed the process up, I don't want a single extra day to go by. And so I invited Chief Allison, Chief Sanders today, uh, because they've already been through this process. And building off their system, I think it's probably gonna be the most effective and efficient way to do that. And so, uh, yeah. They've already got a constructed place and so I know they're, they're building off that system. We part really well with you guys, appreciate it.
When uh, whenever we went about uh, changing our communication system with the uh, the city of Canton. It was all due to the fact that, that uh, the VHF systems uh, out here back, uh, you know, moving into two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Out here became just super crowded. When the state went to a level of narrowbanding, uh, and, and putting some different things in place. Or whatever they thought they were doing good, it actually created more problems uh, out here for communication efforts. Uh, and so for Vincent County, for us as the city of Canton. Uh, the, the disturbances and the lack of communication became a huge problem. Uh, and, and I don't think that I'm announcing anything new to y'all, but when you look out here and you see a first responder. Uh, having to hold their radio up in the air and talk off of the left panel right here, especially in a law enforcement situation out here. Then.
You, you, you're talking like this and your guns.
You know, so they're compromised and everything. So we had to move in a direction to, to solve that problem out here. Uh, so our, our, our efforts at that point became an eighteen-month study. Out here, it took us eighteen months and, and some travels and, and talk, talking to different vendors uh, out here. We've been to Austin, Roanoke, all over the place studying different seven hundred uh, systems out here. Here's what I am gonna tell you about the seven hundred system, not in that, not in day, but between seven hundred and what VHF is. So, you, you know, I'm not in the communication business, so I can't tell you all the little parts of all this. But trying to band-aid a VHF system to move forward in the future. And saying that, that we're gonna be okay is not gonna happen out here. The seven hundred bandwidth that was created up here was created specifically for public safety out here. And so when you, when you look above us, up out here, uh, uh, above us. And you can have some sort of imagination what's sitting above us out here as far as the, the airwaves that we communicate on now day. Look at what else up there now and everything. It's not just our radios. I mean, look at all the cell phones and the data, everything that's just streaming above our heads up here. And the FCC uh, came out here and they carved out this seven hundred and everything. I could take this many, or this big, but they carved this out in an effort to provide a lot of communications. Out here for public safety. Nobody else can get in them. That's locked now. In VHF world out here, uh, saw all kinds, not only public safety. But, but you saw, you know, private businesses that were, that, that were in the VHF. Uh, different entities and stuff like that. When they narrowbanded and they reissued some of these frequencies out here. What they thought they were creating out here was a wide enough split in some of the municipalities and county governments and stuff. That, that wouldn't be defined. I was talking to R. Moore, Oklahoma on my same frequency out here. That, that's how bad it got. Centerville, Texas, we had so much believed of. When we went seven hundred system, I'm gonna tell you about seven hundred system out here. This is, is in the public safety realm out here, there you have. This truck system right here, when we talking about the day we went live out here. As much as y'all can hear me in this room right now, I can take two bouts and send him to Athens. And me and Chief Allison can.
On the handle.
We can talk back and forth with each other. I can take two bouts and then I can send two bouts to the Buckets in Terrell. And we can talk back and forth with each other. Now I'm not gonna tell you, we only have one side and y'all know where our side is out here on eighty-five. We have one side, two antennas. The only complicated area that we have to talk in is when we move east. And topographically, we get into some of this down here. That's the only problem that we have, but if we hit our high points, we're golden. But if he gets to the airport and high, we're talking out here. My example to you with this seven hundred system is that a couple of months ago, we had an officer getting in pursuit down on the interstate. Started just right out here. And then we, they went east on the interstate. They went uh. A few miles past Lindell, down there, then they navigated themselves off the interstate back into the county roads up there. We never lost contact with our officer. Our officer was able to see back to our dispatch center very audibly. There's a bell. What has it done for us as the city of Canton? It doesn't stop this right here. And now we've got officers on the street, that's what's going on here. When uh, as far as the fire department and our level of communications, uh, you know, we, we do assist. Out into the county and what you hear that scratching sometimes on, on still the VHF system uh, on the Vincent County channels. And everything you gotta listen to sometimes, not with us. We can be five miles out in the county system. A South Van Zand or another department out here and our dispatch is gonna hear us just like. So what is the seven hundred system gonna do for this county? We've built our system to be tagged on to. Our efforts, whenever we put our system in place out here, wasn't just about the city of Canton. It was about the future, not only for the city of Canton, but for the county, for Vincent County out here. Uh, it wa- it wasn't just about ourselves. So we built a system out here that could be tagged on in a few days. And that's available out here for, for y'all as the county to tag on to. We uh, there's a certain, there's only a certain amount of pathways that are available. To, to harvest from the FCC and from Metcog down here. At the time, there were ten. We went ahead as the city of Canton, bought seven of them at the time. We don't even get close to using seven top paths. Out here for us. So there's the availability of that. What did it do for us? The assurance to us sitting at the table with our vendor at the time was that y'all are good for no less than twenty-five years. No less than twenty-five years. Isn't it expensive system? Yeah, it's an expensive system. And if you look at that dollar value, face value for just that day. Then you go, oh my gosh, out here. These, these vendors that sell these, they can be very creative with their financing out here. And, and, and stretch your financing out. And you can even look at it during that period right there and go, oh my gosh, we always done this this much in this period of time. But if you'll look at it over that twenty-five years, and that's a minimum, y'all. If you'll look at that amount of money over twenty-five years and divide it like that, now what have you done for your citizens? And that's what it's about. At the end of the day, it's, it's to protect us as first responders out here. But more than that, it's to serve the citizens of Vincent County, all of our municipalities, everybody involved here. It's here to serve our citizens, our first responders and those people that passed through Vincent County out here. And I'll tell you upfront right now, we didn't make a bad decision when we went to seven hundred system out here. And we've been in place four, four years now. We don't regret it and we don't regret spending the money. If there's any questions that we could answer for you. I support the efforts of, of the sheriff. I support the efforts of you as a court up here trying to create something better for communications of Vincent County. If anything that we could answer to y'all about our system, we would be glad to.
The, the city of Canton made the decision when they, when we built our system to build our core big enough. That the county could piggyback off of it and all the cities could piggyback off of it at one time. And. I realize we were all stewards of the taxpayers and all, but we did what we did. In efforts for the fire departments and the county, if they were ever to be able to come on board, our core system would already be there. If, if, I, I, I totally respect going out and looking at bids, I do. But our core is already here. You don't have to build another core. You just have to add on to our core to make your system work. And seven hundred, like he said, seven hundred is built just for municipalities and, and county governments. Tom's plumbing can't get on it and never will be able to get on it. So that's why we spent the money we did in, in hopes that we would all be on one system.
Who would your vendor?
Motorola.
Motorola?
We, we looked at EF Johnson, we looked at Harris, we looked at Motorola. We looked at multiple systems. Like, like he said, we went from Austin to Roanoke to Terrell to Forney. We went to, to a lot of locations and granted Motorola was not the cheapest. EF Johnson came in as the cheapest system, but EF Johnson came in, they were gonna use. A piece of this and a piece of this and a piece of this. It was not all gonna be the same system. We did not want a taxed system. We wanted one system. It was all the same equipment, so it all worked together. I'll stand here before you today and tell you, in the four years we've had our radio system up, the first six months, we went down two times. And within an hour and a half, we had somebody from Longview and we were back up and running and we have not been down since. Uh, they call us periodically and say, hey, we fixed this on the system. What was wrong? Well, we found it as we were monitoring. We didn't even know it. They, they fixed our system. Uh, and like he said, I can talk on a handful from Buckeyes. Where with the VHF, VHF system, if I was standing in front of Panda Express out there, I was holding my radio up in the air and talking like this. And I can talk from my hip and butt bit from Buckeyes. It, it's, it's a world of difference. And, and when you're. When you're rolling around on the ground on side I twenty, that means a lot. That means a lot, fellas.
Any other questions? Any questions, discussion? Well, thank you and, and, and I know and I don't wanna put you in a position, you're not speaking for the city. But it's something we could tie into and work with you guys and, and work together.
Absolutely.
And we, and, and, and y'all would be uh, instrumental in, in helping the county. On what you recommend that, that we need. I mean, I think the more people you bring to the table, the better decision you're gonna make.
It's, it's gonna take sitting down.
That, that's right. I think it's gonna take some time to sit down and have some, some open discussion and dialogue. With, with the city, the county and what, what, cause, cause we want what's best. That, in my opinion, it's been put off too long.
And, and like I spoke with Commissioner LaPrad here, here a while back. This radio here is a field programmable radio. This is a five thousand dollar radio. Saying that. The maintenance guy that's driving the dump truck down the, down the roads does not necessarily need a five thousand dollar radio. They make a twelve hundred dollar radio that does not do all the bells and whistles, that, that talks just as strong. That there's a lot of, there's a lot of cost cut that you can make. We chose at First Monday, our First Monday employees, they don't have these particular radios. Uh, the fire department has the, the heatproof radios where, you know, if they're in a fire, this, you can cut a lot of costs.
It's, it's, it's. We don't, we don't, when you, when you get outside the court and you get outside the integral part of the system. Up here that we house in our building, uh, and on our tower, out here, when you get outside that right there. I don't care what you carry. These guys back here don't like me saying that, but I don't care what you carry out there. I mean, there's all, there, there's all kinds of value to be had in the types of, of handhelds and mobile radios and stuff that you buy. And I don't say this, please don't take this wrong. I don't say this to be snobby or anything. But, but there is a certain level of pickiness that we're gonna have about somebody coming in our building out there and tying into our system and everything. I mean, it's, it, it's a very expensive system and everything. And uh, I, yeah, you, you know, we're just not gonna let so-and-so Joe Lowes, you know. Service come out here that goes, yeah, I can build you one.
service come out here that goes, yeah, I can build you one of this right here, come in there and start tapping into our system. You, you know, and, and whatever system that it is out here. And, and I'll tell you, we are one hundred percent satisfied with the system that we have with Motorola. And, and another cost savings that we did was at First Monday, you know, everybody's had a car radio and everybody had a handheld. You know, that's just the way things have been. Well, there's, there's not a car radio or a truck radio on the First Monday grounds anymore. Everybody has a handheld, because the handhelds talk so good now. You don't need one in the trucks and the cars out there anymore. So there's five, six thousand dollars of vehicle that we saved, cause we didn't put them in. Of course, fire trucks and police cars gotta have them, but the dump truck don't have to have them, as long as the driver's got a handheld. So we cut a lot of radios out of our system, do, 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 how well the handhelds talk. It doesn't matter what kind of radio you talk on.
That's correct.
And you start talking about our building and the core and everything, the things that go in our building out here, you're gonna, you can R F P this, and you can go out and get these bids. But just because somebody gives you the lowest bid and everything, you go, woo, boy, that is, that, that is blue light shopping right there. That may not marry to our system. It may not marry to a Motorola system and work out here. The, the, the Motorola system is a pretty complex system out here. So when, 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 when you're doing your shopping, you know, and, 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 and the sheriff's out here dealing with the different vendors, you gotta have to make sure that this plug fits this plug over here.
Uh gentlemen, that's one of the reasons I wanted to go out for the R F P, so we could get it on the tables, we could discuss and learn all that. A lot of the things you are discussing now is what the R F P process is for. I look very far to working with y'all during that process. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that the county go out and seek proposals for a P twenty-five industrial radio system.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrad, second by Commissioner West. Any other questions for Butter Brad? Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I tell you, we want to partner with you. Thank you. I know you got, it's not like you don't have a hundred other things you could be doing.
Honored to be here, sir.
But uh, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Jamie.
Buddy. All in favor of going out for?
What, what's the time? My question is, the, the East Texas Council of Government, half million dollar grant.
I think there's some.
Are we gonna get any problem on it going out for the R F Ps on, on the timelines of that grant?
No, she said the grant was, I mean, what, I don't know, hold me to the date, but she said you've got a little time. Uh but she's, her recognition, and it started with uh the dispatch, uh the, the console unit in dispatch. She said, you need, you need to get some uh specs. Okay, I didn't even know where to go get specs for the console unit. She said, you need to get some specs and then go out for R F Ps. Uh and she said, you know, Motorola, and, and, and the guys are here, uh they're a good company. But she said, every one of them companies has got fluff built in. And she said, if you go out for R F Ps, then you get, I mean, there's movement there. And uh she said, but nothing against Motorola, I mean, and you don't have to go, you get what you paid for.
Right.
I mean, but bottom line, you get what you paid for. And uh so the, but I, I do believe there's time.
I just didn't wanna lose one thing.
Okay. We have a motion second. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. We'll be in touch with you guys. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments. You have a couple of budget amendments before you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion to approve uh Commissioner Melton. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices, departments of county government, approval entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Commissioner West, you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, we, we have uh seven of our seventeen in uh this, our first meeting, that's about a normal showing, so I think we're in good shape.
Okay, is that a motion to approve the monthly reports? Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion on the reports? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion, motion carried. At this time, we'll enter into a closed executive session. It's nine fifty.